Thank you. And Lori, we've done the roll call?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So we'll have a moment of silence, then we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, we need approval and adoption of the agenda. Richard?
This is Huber. I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Richard Huber makes a motion. Is there a second?
Ray will second.
Brad Ray seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Pose. Motion carried. Is there no public comment? Okay, okay. Okay, so now we'll go to the public hearing amending the nineteen thirty-four use district's ordinance.
I'll make a motion that we go into public hearing.
Motion. Is there a second?
Ray will second.
Brad Ray seconds it. Any discussion? All those of Laura?
Can we have some history on this? So everybody's up to date then?
Uh, yeah, that is later on in the agenda.
There's history on it.
Well.
There's history on it later in the agenda after we.
Well, we do the public hearing first.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, motion made and second to amend or go into the public hearing. All those in favor say aye. Pose. Motion carried. Is anybody here for public comment? Public hearing, sorry. Anyone online? Hearing none? Laura?
You have to do it three times?
Yes. Is there anyone online or present for the public hearing? Anyone online or here for the public hearing? Hearing none?
Keep the public hearing open and move on with the agenda.
Okay. Okay, we need a motion to leave the public hearing open and we'll move on with the agenda in case somebody comes in. Supervisor Nego?
This is Laura. I'll make that motion.
Laura makes a motion. Is there a second?
This is Huber. I'll second it.
Rich Huber seconds it. Questions? All those in favor say aye. Pose. Motion carried. Public comment pertinent to the agenda items resolutions ordinance of the day. Is there anyone in the audience that's public comment? Anyone online? Anyone online? Or in the audience for public comment? Anyone online or in the public gallery? Hearing none? Okay. Regular agenda. We need a motion to approve the June eighteenth, twenty twenty-four county board minutes.
This is Blake Ellison. I'll make a motion to approve the June eighteenth minutes.
Motion by Blake. Is there a second?
Second by Bill Metzger.
Bill Metzger seconds. Any corrections, changes, deletions on the minutes?
Five E doesn't have who made the motion or second.
So five E doesn't say who made the motions in the second?
I'll have to go back to my notes and have that amended.
Okay. So can we approve the minutes? Except for five E? Or that they'll be amended at the next meeting? We could leave the minutes unapproved until the next meeting.
I think we just kick it to next meeting then.
Okay. No objections. We'll we'll leave the approval of June eighteenth county board minutes until the next meeting. Approval of amending the nineteen thirty-four use district's ordinance.
First. Yeah. So this was brought up because we don't have any history at all for recreation vehicle in our county in our ordinance. Right now, if somebody wants to put some kind of a recreation vehicle on their property and use it for, say, like a cabin, then we would have to give a dwelling permit. And the dwelling permits are five hundred dollars. Along with a dwelling permit by state statute, we have to have some kind of a septic system that goes with it. So we checked with surrounding counties. Pretty much everyone I've read, they they all have this RV ordinance where they can give a permit for a RV. They still have to have at minimum would be a non-plumbing agreement. Or show some kind of a have an agreement that they had pumped their tank for septic. Being we don't have anything in the ordinance written up, that's why, just to clear it up, that's why we brought this up. Otherwise, yeah, there's no history. Otherwise, I could I could say on this. The fee is a hundred dollars and that that fee was already in our on our fee schedule and I don't know where that came from. But it was on there. So we were just gonna stick with that.
Mr. Metzger?
Uh, this is Bill. Um, was this approved by the zoning committee?
Yes, this was.
I just I want to just clarify something. In Price County, when I put a camper on the property, I paid a hundred dollar use fee and I had to maintain some type of a I I actually had a porta potty that fell within their guidelines. So are you saying we would have, we already have a hundred dollar sitting fee, I call it?
We so there it just says there's a fee for an RV, a hundred dollars to give the permit out. So there would be no expiration. If somebody wants to use this for a cabin, that'd be just fine. As long as we get that sanitary permit with it, which would be non-plumbing for for an RV.
Okay.
And you can see also on this, it talks about it being on an undeveloped parcel. So that would make sense. So someone don't have to get a permit, have it sitting in their yard. But if they want to use it in the back forty, like for a hunting cabin, that's what it's for.
Mr. Reader?
I'm on the committee when we approved it, but I got thinking this after. Who is who enforces this to make sure that they have this permit and everything?
Um, as far as enforcing, I guess it's up to us, the zoning. And the only way really these things we would find out about them is if there comes in a complaint that there's one out there without a permit.
I've just, you know, I proved, helped to prove.
Otherwise, it's it's pretty hard to know if someone if one of these are sitting out there.
Sure. That's what I was I was thinking assessor. When the assessor went around, I mean, I think that's when a lot of it would come.
Okay. Um, the assessors do send us a list every now and then if they find things out there that maybe are new and don't have any kind of a permit. And then we carry through with it.
I was just curious and was think, you know, thinking after the meeting we had. Just curious.
I don't expect it's gonna be a real big issue, but the the nice thing is just that we have some language in this ordinance. So I have something to go by if people ask, because right now it's pretty pretty vague.
Right, yeah.
This is Bill. Um, is this just for one recreation vehicle or, you know, if if you get the permit and then down the road you put another one on, do you need another permit or no?
Yeah, that's how we've, uh, any additional one would require another permit. And if you see on the bottom there, it requires twenty thousand square feet and that goes along with what we have in our ordinance for a second dwelling too.
Um, should not should are these permits for the hundred dollars? Is that forever? You know, doesn't that isn't there a time limit on that? It's like if you got a recreational permit, shouldn't it be good for like five years or ten years instead of permanent?
Well, if they're using it for a hunting cabin, um, and that from one of the other ones I've looked in other counties, they don't expire. Not that I've seen anyway.
Laura?
Okay, one housekeeping thing. Um, can you introduce yourself? Because people might watch this online later so that way they know who you are.
Yep, sorry about that. So I'm Bruce Blakeman, the county administrator for zoning.
I know that, but people online might not. Um, here's my concern. So somebody comes, puts an RV on on a plot of land and they pay their hundred dollars and they start renting it out as an Airbnb. So have we created another problem? Because um, that's what that's what this housing market and this tourism kind of making your own uh, money on the side kind of market is doing with this. So do we by making the permit one hundred dollars for in perpetuity evidently, do we create issues for ourselves? Because if it, yeah, we so far it might be it's a hunting cabin, but if it's a hunting cabin and then they're renting it and then there's all these other issues, do we have supporting zoning ordinances and such to make sure we don't have an issue? Because my thought is is a hundred dollar permit is not that big if you're gonna leave an RV on a place every year or every three years. You know, because you bought the land and I get you pay the taxes, but you're getting around having to have the septic and the stuff and everything else. So I I I find I have a little issue with this.
The only thing I could say to that, I wouldn't expect too many people would do this for an RV, but maybe for a cabin, an actual structure. So I wouldn't see it as an issue, but it could be.
Um, is there a way we can restrict it to where it's? I I I just I just find that it could be an issue. Because if people start buying up lands because they can throw an RV in there and they've got six of these different places and they're renting it out constantly, it's a it's a whole different issue. And if we don't have if this was just here's a hunting cabin kind of thing, it would be one thing, but if it turns into one of these rentals and people rent some of the weirdest things, um, I've seen people rent out like somebody has a one of those travel vans parked in a parking lot. I've seen it online where they rent it out to people. So do we want to become that? And do we have a way of stopping that?
Pat?
Or tracking it?
I was on zoning from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-two and I'm back now. One of the issues that we spent a lot of time back then on was septic waste in Ashland County being placed in places where they didn't have permission to put it. So in broad terms, I'll make that statement. My understanding is this ordinance change is part of the attempt to address septic waste in Ashland County not being placed in places it should be. In other words, running to streams, creeks, just wherever. Um, so it's part of that effort. This would give us a database of where people would have any type of structure, camper, whatever. So at least we know they're there and it places requirements on them so that we can enforce it. And if they're not enforcing it, then we can deal with it. All those other questions you raised, I think are very good questions. Um, and I think they're separate from this, but this is an ordinance change so that we have knowledge of where they're at. And we have requirements on septic waste. Everything else would be in addition to that. All of which I think is good stuff to consider, given the concerns you raised. And I would agree with them growing up where I grew up, because I see the same thing in my neck of the woods. But this is an important part of keeping our water clean. And knowing where these things are.
Mr. Stark?
This is Mike Stark. I got two comments. One is, don't we have a rental ordinance?
I know of none.
You don't?
No, not in in our town. Maybe on the island there is, but.
I mean, I I know that Tom of the point's got a rental.
Yeah, I don't believe we have anything for.
The county doesn't require an inspection to have a rental property?
You know, the health department does.
That's right. I mean, there's got to be a rental ordinance.
Yeah, yeah, the health department does.
Yeah, so we have a rental ordinance. In order to rent a place, you've got to get.
Yeah.
Okay, so there is some rental ordinance. Okay. And then there's one other comment is what we're looking at here, the only thing we're looking at is the second, the third page, the that's printed in red, that's the only change that we're making, right?
Yeah, correct.
Okay, I mean, just so as people know that that's that's what we're talking about this. That's okay. Thank you.
One other thing, just to go along with that. I do know the other counties either already have some kind of a rental ordinance or they're working on them because I've had some emails what our situations are. We don't we don't have a problem yet, I would say, but I would say it's coming. Um, yeah, the some of the surrounding counties that have a lot of lakefront cabins and homes, they got some issues. So that's probably gonna something coming up in the future, but I really don't feel that's part of our RV ordinance.
Mr. Vasey?
Uh, just, uh, short. How long does my RV have to be parked on my hunting forty before this kicks in? I don't quite understand.
Believe believe we have twenty-one days on there. Yep, twenty-one consecutive days.
I was gonna just suggest that maybe the rental ordinances are to the individual towns and cities, they would have ordinances regarding that, but the health department gets involved in the areas of, you know, food service and sanitation and things like that for uh things that are available to the public uh on a interim basis. I mean, we have a sanitarian that that inspects those properties that are, you know, like vacation rentals and things like that.
Any, Mr. Reader?
And I know like Airbnbs, they do do a inspection of before you can become a rental, they do an inspection. But also I think we have to remember that this is still America and you really can't, it's the people's land. You can't just tell them what they can and can't do. You still got to give them some freedom to do what they want. You can't tell them everything they can and can't do.
Laura?
Anyways, that Airbnb thing is my next concern because what qualifies as a rental? Is it some, is it two weeks? Is it a week? Is it one day? Um, I think these are things that need to go with this. Because those kind of bring up the concerns. I don't mind people doing kind of what they want to as long as we have a basis to make sure that things don't run away and like 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 you said, you know, it it could lead to a whole bunch of people buying up lakefront properties and we kind of like to have properties on there because it helps support all the all the services that we help provide for those. So the county having a basic set of rules and the township's deciding if they want it tighter or not is up to them, but I think we need to have basic set of rules with this. Otherwise, I would like to see this, if there's a permit for this kind of stuff, I I would like to see a time limit on it.
Mr. Metzger? Um, to recreational vehicles that are there more than twenty-one days, do they need a nine one one number?
To my knowledge, there's no requirement for for if it's a dwelling, then we do.
Or a cabin?
Mm-hmm.
But a recreational vehicle that's just parked there, if it's under four hundred square feet and they're not living in it, it's it's tax exempt. So that would be considered a recreational vehicle. Um, but there's no nine one one number required?
Yeah, I I just want to I had a I had this situation for fourteen years until the last month or so. I paid a hundred dollars one time fee, but I had to have approval for the permit for the septic. I had the choice of what type of septic either a outhouse under the guidelines, a porta potty, which I actually put in. Um, but I had to get a nine one one in another county sign because it was a, I put a roof not on the trailer but around it. So it became a structure. So that county required a nine one one sign because of the structure. But and you know, I'm not sure what how Ashland would treat that, but uh, there's a lot of people with forties or eighties or whatever and it's an easy way to, it was a cheap way for me for fourteen years to have a hunting cabin. So, but, okay.
Hi, my name is Karisha Flint and I'm the zoning administrative assistant for the zoning department. We are sort of the middle guys when it comes to the nine one one addressing. I know Brittany Gueros Weisbecker is working on an ordinance stating that if you do have a dwelling, you are required to have a nine one one fire number. However, we currently do not have one in place. So as of right now, no, but we're working on it for the future. Just wanted to clarify.
Good, thank you. Any other questions? Pat?
Um, I'm on zoning and I'm on finance and um, zoning, as you just said, they're working on updating the nine one one, the database, the GIS. And one thing that we know from our last zoning meeting is next year, if they put additional staff at time into that, it will also mean that we may need to consider adding more to their budget to do that. So if this is an area with a nine one one, et cetera, that the board does want to see more put into um, that there'll also be, we anticipate at least some budget implication for staff work.
Um, and we're also gonna have zoning committee look at a rental ordinance too, a county wide one. It's one of the many zoning changes that need to happen.
Okay. Uh, Mike?
I'll make a motion that we approve the submitted uh, changes to this ordinance that's reflected on page three. Uh, with follow-on to happen by other committees.
Okay, motion by Mike Stark. Is there a second?
This is Pat. I'll second.
Pat Kenny seconds. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried. Thank you. Appointments of the county tribal committee?
So, uh, two appointments were made by Chairman Murtagh and two were made by Chairman Blanchard. So we'd ask that you approve these appointments.
Mr. Metzger?
I'll make I'll make a motion that we approve these appointments.
Your second? Mr. Sindor?
Um, second that motion.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes.
I was wondering, um, when this committee was first started, um, what happened to that? You know, um, because I was on this committee when it first started.
Okay.
And I was never told that there's this was happening. As a matter of fact, I was never told anything. It just disappeared.
Um, I think it uh, it disappeared before I came on board. So I'm just speaking from what I've heard. Although, Mr. Kenny, maybe you have better history. Um, my understanding is that it was formed and then COVID kind of destroyed, kind of stopped everything. And that it just never got back together again. So I've been, you know, we've been talking with the chairman and Chris McIsitch about reforming it. And we did that at our last meeting together. We named this one before that. So, um, so Chairman Blanchard approved himself and Mike Berlin as members of this committee.
Mr. Kenny?
You and I were both on. Um, this is Pat. We were both on the committee when it was first formed. It was a committee of four. Um, and then COVID hit. Um, and so we had that initial meeting and then after that we were attempting to get the committee back together to have the four members and with COVID, we weren't able to get the committee together with everybody or at least three of us there. Um, we just couldn't get the people to meet. So I did work with the previous administrator trying to set meetings. And we could not arrange for people to say, yes, I'll be there so that we would have a quorum. So and it was COVID. So then these appointments with all of our committees, there are every two years when there's a new um, after the election. And so we just had an election in April and so all the committees are up for reappointments or changes at that point. So these names are based on appointments after the election this past April.
And just a note, earlier this morning, exec, we talked about whether it should be five members or an odd number of members, but we'll have to have the committee or administration and Bad River figure that out because potentially with four, you could have a tie, but I don't know what the fairness is if you go five. But it may be a talking point of, you know, would we ever get into a situation where we have two, two or something? Um, so we'll look at that, whether it should be an odd number of members.
Oh, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
I have a question.
Laura?
Technically, you're a member of all the committees. So you don't really need to be on here. So there could be four and then you as just the member that is on all of our committees?
Yeah.
You are. Technically, you're a member of all the committees.
Correct, but what I want to do is talk to the tribal side too, because I don't want anyone to have a feeling that we loaded three, if that's a number, if it's five. I want to see, you know, how does Bad River feel about the number if it should be odd or even?
Well, probably just put two more Bad River members on there.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, is Mr. Metzger?
How long are these appointments for? Are they just for a term or should that not be mentioned in there or?
So they're just for the term.
Okay, but.
Because we don't know who's gonna be on the board after.
I know, but I'm just saying, shouldn't that be kind of mentioned in the in the motion that we appoint this for, you know, the time period? Because the way it's written is, is this permanent or?
Well, it the the situation would be in in two years at the next election, if the entire county board is replaced, then they're gonna have two new members. I mean.
If you'd like to make an amendment to say for the term ending in April twenty-six, you could.
Does that follow the same term as the tribe?
I know the tribe, I believe, has elections the November before. Is that correct, Mr. McKee? Yeah.
Mr. Kenny?
That's that's actually a good suggestion because this is a county tribal committee and it's not just a county committee. We know county committees, it's every term. But this has membership from outside the county. So that clarity to me would make sense because we're looking at it from our perspective. And if your you know, elections and stuff are different, then it doesn't consider what's on the other end. So both sides really, if we do put the ending in the date in twenty twenty-six, that would make clarity for both sides on this. But your your suggestion makes sense, Bill.
Mr. Mr. Legro?
Shouldn't we just appoint our own members and not appoint the tribal members and that would clarify the whole thing?
Correct, correct.
So is it the wishes to say that we're appointing the county members to this tribal committee for the term of two years from the election for the new board? Term term ending in April of twenty twenty-six? Is that, Bill?
That ma- that makes a lot of sense.
Okay. So do.
And I'll make I'll make that motion.
To amend that?
And I'll second his amendment.
Okay, there's a motion and second to amend the uh, tribal committee appointments from the county side that those members' term will end April of twenty twenty-six. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
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 Pose. Motion carried.
Now we just voted on the amendment. Do we have to vote on the whole thing?
Okay, now we need to have a motion to approve the appointments to the Ashland County Tribal Committee for Ashland County. Miss Negro?
I will make that motion.
Motion made by Laura, second. Ron?
Ronald, second that.
Ron Sindor seconds, questions? All those in favor say aye. Pose, motion carried. Now we need a motion for resolution R O eight, twenty twenty four, fourteen seventy seven, use of state appropriation for tax exempt properties in the town of Sandburn. Is there a motion?
Ray, so moved.
Brad Ray's made the motion, is there a second? Mr. Messinger?
I, I will second that motion.
Mr. Messinger, seconds, questions?
Okay. So as we all know, um, in wait to, the fall twenty to the seventh circuit court made all tribal prop- all property on the reservation owned by tribal members tax exempt. Um, a lot of, during the period of the court case, there were a lot of tribal members that did not pay taxes and now those taxes, so, so we held tax certificates for them. Um, we did make the communities whole. The towns received all their tax money. The schools received all their tax money. The county paid them out. And we did not receive anything. So, um, now that those properties are exempt and those certificates are worthless because of the Seventh Circuit Court of Appeals, the state appropriated a little over one point eight million dollars to help us get rid of those tac- those tax certificates. So in order to do so, we calc- the, our consultants, Mike and Steve and Land Description, calculated up the total amount of unredeemable tax certificates is one point, little over one point four million listed in the. Um, in addition, we had to pay a chargeback last year for the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, because the town of Sandburn gave refunds to those tribal members who paid taxes, even though they didn't have to. Um, we re- there's another um, si- chargeback coming back next year for the remainder of the refunds, which we just got yesterday at, and that's gonna be an amount of forty two thousand, one hundred and nine dollars and nine cents. Uh, noting that this is a preliminary determination, so it could change yet. So the, this resolution is saying is with the one point eight seven three million dollars, the state get appropriated and gave to the Ashland County to make up, to pay for these tax certificates that were formally saying that we're re- that that money is being used to get those tax certificates off the tax rolls. So it doesn't come up on, when you do go into um, GIS, it doesn't come up as back taxes owed. It clears title on the pro- the title on the properties, but it also makes that one point four million dollars spendable money again. So it's really a cleanup of our accounting system and our tax certificates. This, this also allows us to pay this forty nine thousand dollar charge, forty thousand chargeback out of that money. So it's not coming out of the general fund. And it allows us to pay our vendor catalysts to take care of the actual work that needs to be done in GIS. Uh, they're estimating that amount is around seven thousand dollars. It could be more, it could be less, but somewhere around there. Oh, any questions? Uh, Mr. Messinger could probably explain everything that I didn't.
Um, Mr. Messinger?
Thank you. Um, when you're kind of explaining it, I'm kinda lost. Um, what, what happened is that the taxes were levied, they were not paid. And so a certificate number was assigned, okay? As long as they weren't paid, the certificate number was still out there and that amount was due. And so what the county had to do, the county had to settle with all the districts, their share of that tax, even though it wasn't paid, and the county was left holding the bag for their share also. So they had to pay the school, vocational school, um, the district off. And so what this resolution does is it gives, gives the money back to the county. We already had paid the majority of this already to the districts. So this is just kinda making us whole. And then when the tribe, the people that did pay their taxes that would qualify for this exemption, when they paid the taxes or they paid the taxes, so what now they have requested a refund from the tribe and the tribe actually paid it.
Well, town of Sandburn, not.
Town of Sandburn, pardon me. So this is just making us whole. We're not, we're not really, we're just getting the money that we paid out and then what was due to us because of the amount that we levied.
And to further, the reason why we had to get the money from the state is in any forecl- in any foreclosure event, which is what would have happened in a normal situation, the municipalities and the school are always made whole every year. But our rec- and we're left holding the bag, but our recourse is to foreclose on the property and sell it to get our money back. But in this case, because of the court order, we couldn't do that. So we were left holding the bag completely, which is why we lobbied the state legislature to get us the money back.
There was a, at one point, a loan taken out from the town of Sandburn. Did that get paid off then?
Um, I don't know what the town of Sand- I don't know, my, my understanding is this town, they took out a million dollar loan. They made the first tranche payments that covered two thousand fifteen to two thousand eighteen, I believe, with that money. Then they got the chargebacks from the school, the city, the county and all the, the other towns, including the town of Sandburn, use that money to pay off the second payment, which would cover two thousand nineteen to present. And now they're taking these chargebacks and they'll use that to pay back the link, the Bureau of Land Commissioners. Um, it's not gonna be the whole thing, obviously, but the, the town is still responsible for paying that loan. They believe it'll be done within five years, I believe, what they said.
Any other questions? There's a motion and a second on the floor to approve resolution R O eight, twenty twenty four, fourteen seventy seven. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carried. We need a ro- motion for resolution R O eight, twenty twenty four, fourteen seventy eight, provision of short-term financial assistance to the Northwest Wisconsin Concentrated Emplo- Employment Program Incorporated, Northwest SEPT.
So, um, SEPT ran into some financial problems. They lost revenue. Um, state and federal funding were decreased. They had staffing issues. Um, and all just a whole big mess generally. Um, they've asked all the eleven counties eh, that they cover to help them bridge the gap by providing a five thousand dollar loan or they prefer a gift, but every county's doing a loan to co- to help cover their expenses. Um, we're not responsible for their, their funding shortfall. Uh, we would be responsible if there was malfeasance eh, on the part of SEPT, but this is, that's not the case. So, um, most county, most other counties have already taken it up and are giving them the five thousand dollars. Um, and it is to help out people who are unemployed in the area, so help them get jobs again.
Questions? Laura?
This is Laura, I'll make the motion.
Miss Negro made a motion to approve, is there a second?
Ron Stender will second.
Mr. Stender seconds, any other questions?
Hey, I just wanna make one note, this needs a three quarter vote to be passed.
And it is a loan.
It is a loan and we need three quarters of approval for it to pass.
See, Elizabeth?
I'm on the board, can I even vote on this?
Aye. Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Messinger?
The, does this need a roll call vote?
Uh, we should probably do a roll call just to be safe.
Okay, any other questions? Motion made and seconded to approve the loan, roll call?
Reamer?
Yes.
McPhee?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Anderson? Huber?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Hader?
Yes.
Murtagh?
Yes.
Ellison?
Yes.
Trudeau?
Yes.
Negro?
Yes.
Messinger?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Pufal?
Yes.
Franek?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Stender?
Yes.
Nineteen, yes, pass.
Then we need a motion for resolution R O eight, twenty twenty four, fourteen seventy nine, resolution advocating for impatient behavioral health facility for Northern Wisconsin.
I'll move approval, cl- Campbell.
Mr. Campbell makes a motion.
Bruce, I second.
George Visay seconds, questions? Motion made and seconded to approve, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carried. Then we need a ro- um, motion for resolution R O eight, twenty twenty four, fourteen eighty, resolution calling for state investment in mental health funding. Mr. Campbell?
I'll mo- move to approve.
There's a second, this?
Franek, second.
Ms. Franek seconds, questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carried. Then we need a motion for resolution R O eight, twenty twenty four, fourteen eighty one, applying for the fiscal year twenty twenty five, PSA P grant funding. Whoops. Did I what? Not a mental health, you just got done. You're behind.
Oh, I thought there was three.
Nope.
Okay.
Ray, Ray will make a motion to approve. Mr. Ray makes a motion?
Ron Stender will second.
Ron Stender seconds?
Point of clarification, which one are we on?
We're on uh, the PSA grant funding, H.
Did we do the crisis and CSP? I thought that was the mental health fund, because there's three of them.
No, they're.
Behavioral health, mental health, and crisis and CSP.
Yeah. They.
Five G.
Yes, so we're on the H. Okay.
We only voted for two.
Fourteen seventy nine. Fourteen seventy nine, motion um, to approve by Campbell, who say had seconded. Voice vote was carried, uh, five G, fourteen eighty resolution, Campbell and Franek seconded. And now we are currently on the fourteen eighty one, which Bradley Ray made a motion and Stender second.
Okay.
I think, I think where the confusion is, is that they're be supportive. Under five G, one is the resolution and another is just a kind of an explanatory letter.
Gotcha.
Okay, so now on five H, we have a motion and a second. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
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 Pose, motion carried. Okay, five I, National Preparedness Month Proclamation. Do we just need a motion to approve that proclamation? Okay, so a motion's in order to approve five I.
I'll make a motion, Hader.
Mr. Hader makes a motion, is there a second?
This is Huber, I'll second it.
Mr. Huber seconds it, questions? All those in favor say aye. Pose, motion carried. Five J, drive electric week proclamation. Is there a motion?
This is Bruce, I'll move that proclamation.
Mr. Visay made the motion, is there a second?
Ron Stender will second.
Mr. Sindor seconds, questions? Mr. Messinger?
Does this proclamation do anything? You know, I, I, I read it and, and you know, that was my question.
Uh, effectively, it doesn't do anything, no.
The same, the same thing could probably be said of those mental health resolutions that we passed too. They really probably aren't gonna have much effect, but.
Just there. I do think that as a s- community and as a society, though, these are important things that we bring to our legislators and our legislators need to do their jobs and represent the communities and the citizens in the state. So yes, these don't have teeth, but they should be getting people to do their job down at the state level.
Mr. Messinger?
Will, will these two resolutions be forward to our legislatures?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Kenny?
I actually think this is rather important because um, some of the news stories I've read on electric adoption tie into solar panels and we're not maybe as aware of this in this end of the state, but in southern end of the state, there's farmers who are getting significant amounts of money to turn their cornfields into um, fields with solar panels and not everybody's happy about that. I read an article in one of the farm papers a year or two ago that, you know, we raise a lot of corn and they make ethanol. If we took a fourth of our land that's in corn in Wisconsin by this study, we would produce our energy that we need. But we would also have less environmental impact due to less erosion and chemicals um, on our land. And so the legislature being in Madison hears a lot of stories in the news about farms where people don't want solar panels. And so in the southern end of the story state, there's actually been a lot of pushback to having solar panels and counties are actually, this has become an issue. Counties have not been supportive of allowing solar panels in fields because there's people that don't wanna see that or they think the farmland should not have solar panels. So our legislature is in an area where there's a lot of pushback to doing this. And so I think this is important to, to voice our support for this because in the state, there's a lot of counties that are not supporting this.
Mr. Visay?
Right, so I was unaware of this, but when I read it, I realized there is a, a value in that most grant applications for charging infrastructure are looking for community support as part of the grant application process. And we have grants outstanding for charging infrastructure, charging infrastructure helps our tourism business. So it's in our, our best interest to express this community support and support of present and future grant applications that bring money into our community.
Good, thank you. Any other, Mr. Messinger?
Do, does Ashland County um, require some type of permit to go ahead and give uh, one of these out, like a windmill or, you know, some solar panels? Do, do they require a permit, Bruce? Bruce is not here.
Uh, yes, they, yes, we do require a permit.
Okay.
Um, but there's, this is actually a topic that WCA has been talking about lately and we can't really deny the permits. Uh, local government does not have much zoning control over solar, over any electrical, any energy issue. So, um, it's an ongoing, voting, it's an ongoing issue that WCA is addressing.
Okay. Heather, help me out here. We have a motion and a second, correct? Okay, okay, I thought so, but okay, so there's a motion and a second to approve five J. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carried. Administrator updates.
Okay, um, one of them I already talked about, we got the, the second chargeback. Um, which again is forty two thousand, one hundred and nine dollars and nine cents. And we'll be using the state money we received to pay for that, so it will not come out of our general fund money. So, and we will have extra money uh, from the state appropriation. So Finance Committee can decide what to do with that portion. Um, two, a few weeks ago, we had our oral interview with the EPA um, on the solar grant, which would be putting solar pa- panels that, all over the. um, on the solar grant, which would be putting solar panels that, all over the county on town villagers halls, at the city wastewater plant, um, putting in charging stations at hi, at the highway department, um, setting up micro grids at the sheriff's department, highway department, HHS, and all the, all the town halls that are participating, all also twenty million dollar project. Um, so the, we, we had that interview, which is a really good place because that means we got through all the, everybody else. Um, they said they would let us know in a few weeks. So I expect a few weeks, actually means more like a few months, but we should hear soon whether or not we get that. Um, I'm hoping we hear back before budget time because that might affect some of our capital outlays, since there were two electric trucks put in there for leases. So this, um, the feds would pay for a five-year lease for two electric trucks, one for highway and one for emergency management. So we're hoping to hear from that soon. Um, we finally have a finished contract for the sheriff's deputies after eight months. Um, so that'll be going to exec committee next month and coming to this county board next month also. So, um, that's really all I have for now. Oh, and I guess last but not least, um, our grant writer started working yesterday. Um, she's here today, so I'd like to introduce her to you. Uh, Erica Hannical is staying in the corner there. So she will be, right now she's working on a, a DRT grant for charging stations all through the county too. These would be at like gas stations, so private businesses would get these. Um, the idea is to have one in Butternut, one in Glidden, one in Melon, uh, more in Ashland. Um, uh, and this is, for us, it's great because the grant pays for eighty percent of the cost and then Excel Energy pays the twenty percent. So it's pretty much like free charging stations everywhere.
Mr. Metzinger? Is, is there going to be a charge for the people that get their vehicles charged? How, how much of a charge is that going to be?
Well, the gas stations will, I've said, will charge, yes. Um, there's a waiver in state statutes that allow private entities to charge for electric charging. Um, the only one that we can't charge is in municipalities. So if we were to um, like a charging station, we would get at highway department, that could only be used for us. And if we let the public use it, it would have to be for free. So um, but yes, the private businesses will charge. How much they charge is, I don't know yet. I mean, PSC sets electric rates every year. She's also, Erica's also going to be looking at housing grants too. So affordable housing. Um, and I doubt there's any out there, but we want to look at market-based housing too. Because we need all of it.
Mr. Huber?
Yes, the, that charging station, does all the money go to the business where this charging station is, or how is, how is that money?
Yeah, it goes to the business.
Does it? Okay.
Yes. Yeah, so instead of selling gas, it's electricity.
Yeah, I'll just make a point. In the last week, I went to Quantico, Virginia for the weekend. Did eighteen hundred miles and every state I traveled through on the waysides where they sell gas and other things, there were charging stations at every one of them and they were probably eighty percent full. People would stop, charge their car and go in and get something to eat or whatever. And I was amazed at how many, you know, most of these stations had seven, eight maybe, you know, and the majority of them were being used. So I, I think that's probably what's held us up is there's just no place to charge them. You know, so.
Yeah, and the idea is, you know, so if we put a charging station at the gas station in Melon, that person's gonna have to sit there and charge their vehicle while, while they wait, they're gonna probably go shop around in the, in the city and patronize all the local businesses.
It's a really good support piece for tourism too, because people with the cars have to have places to charge, so they look at a map and that's the places that they go and especially our wonderful little villages and cities down in the southern part of the county, you know, gives a great boost to tourism and, and you know, just the local restaurants and everything.
To Laura's point, I mean, Clam Lake's had one for five years out there and it's all tourism out there.
The city has one right in front of City Hall. And you know, you can drive by it, there's always cars charging. And those people are always walking down Main Street, going to the local businesses. So that while the city doesn't make any money on the charging, the businesses do and so.
I, I have a question for the administrator. Um, as far as what's going on with the building here, when is it going to be completed? And I think it's important to mention the roof on the courthouse where it's leaking.
Sure.
So go ahead.
All right, so the work will be done at the end of the month. Um, approximately, give or take a few days. Um, what, what they've been doing is they've tuck, been tuck pointing the building. There were literally rocks that you could pull right out. Here, so there was nothing holding them in other than their own weight. Um, on the roof, there is a copper gutter up there, um, which is cracked. Which has been causing mo, the major, the vast majority of the water leaks in the building. Um, finance committee approved, uh, was it sixteen thousand dollar change order? To have that fixed. So they went up there and they welded the copper to fix all the leaks. So it will not be leaking up there anymore. And there's still some roofwork that needs to be done, but it's not urgent. If you look on, on top of the roof, you'll see um, there's some asphalt shingles. And there, those need to be replaced eventually, but this company doesn't do that part of it. They, they were able to take care of the copper, which is the important part. And at sixteen thousand dollars, that was cheap because just to get a company to come here and set up to do it would cost at least sixteen thousand dollars. So um, we were lucky to get it done while the scaffolding is up and get it fixed.
Is this last stuff helping the leak that's into the courtroom?
Yes.
All right, you know how it goes. Happy wife, happy life. Happy, happy judge, happy courthouse.
Yes, that, and that's what it's gonna do and it was really coming through the copper that was cracked was the problem.
Okay, county board supervisors? Any other items?
I got something. We're, um, where, where's our carbon credit setting at? What's the deal with that?
Uh, well, the market hasn't been doing much. Uh, they came out and evaluated our, our forest and they're in the process of going up for sale. I know Bayfield County, who started a year or two before us, just had their sale done. So um, I'd expect at least another year before we see anything.
Mr. Visage?
Uh, don't forget the Ashland County Fair starting on the uh, sixteenth.
Laura?
Um, just because you guys do funding to the aging unit, I do want to make you guys all aware that a lot of our funding is going to get checked. And by checked, I mean, I don't know how much it's going to be cut. Um, I will be going to finance to ask for a little increase. Um, we're gonna be prioritizing everything from people who can receive home-delivered and congregate meals to who can get caregiver support services. Every single service that we have that is funded by state and federal dollars will have a new way to rank order people as we're trying to deliver services. Um, I, I'm, I can find lots of grants for a lot of things, but the meals is the hard part and, and transportation, if you're not asking for a whole ton to get by a new bus, which we are getting a new bus this next year. Um, there's not a lot of it, so I'm right, I wrote a couple of small grants for supporting programs and I got both of those, so we'll be adding another person to the office to try to help, but there's not a lot of direct, hey, here's a pool of money to feed your seniors. So I, I just wanted to update you guys on that.
Rich?
Is Northland still doing food service for us or no?
At this point, Northland is still our major food vendor. I am working with the Butternut School District and the Glidden School District has kicked up. So we will be able to work with them for some of our meals down there. Um, I don't know what kind of student count Northland has at this point. I'm not hearing the three hundred and fifty-ish kids that they were looking to have on campus. I'm actually hearing closer to about a hundred and fifty, less than that. So I don't know what that's going to be, so I am still making contracts with other places and, and it'll be, it'll be a good intergenerational project to have some of our sites at the schools. Plus give the schools and the local population, keep some of that money right in county, so, and fresher meals, so. Thanks for the question, Rich.
Yes, thanks. Any other questions? Any communications? Otherwise, the big motion to adjourn. Mr. Huber?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
There's a second? Don't really need it, but we'll ask for it.
I'll second then to get Ray second.
All those, all those in favor of adjournings, say aye.